Four o'clock, I'll call it a regular session of the town council to order. Would you please join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, is everybody here on the agenda, or we have some public comment? Go right ahead.
Thank you. I was just reading through the notes from last meeting, I didn't know you were documenting.
Stay your name for record if you would.
Steve Brown, Super Ten for Creek Crash Facility. I was just reading through the notes, I didn't know that you were documenting my comments, so I better be. Wanted to let you know that, last time I mentioned that in order to be a security officer, you have to take a test now, prior to applying for the position. KCC has signed an agreement with the testing agency, so we can provide those tests here locally at KCC. I was speaking to Jake Greer, parole probation officers, I understand even sheriff's departments and local police departments, I don't see the chief here, but it sounds like any applicants for those positions would have to take a similar test. So hopefully KCC would be able to conduct those tests for our local law enforcement also. I don't know about that for sure, but Jake was just mentioning to me, so that's a good thing. I did mention last time, we currently still have five positions vacant. Fortunately, we have twice as many people that are going to be interviewed on the 21st, so I think our odds are pretty good to picking up some additional staff up there. So that's good. And then, put on my senior center hat for a minute. We have a liaison with the commissioners, and I was wondering, the last time you were talking about your liaison assignments, if the town council would consider a liaison to the senior center. We'd love to have someone who could invite to our board meetings and then, you know, interact with them at the town level. So if you guys would consider that, we'd appreciate it.
That's an idea.
Get you the schedule for board meetings and get an invite to you.
I have the lightest duty, and I'm certainly in their age bracket.
I'm not touching that at all. Do you have an upper limit?
I'm sitting here looking at too many former students. There's no sense lying about it.
Okay, we'll take that under discussion, but I'd, it sounded like we do have a volunteer, it sounds good to me.
We'll get you the next meeting.
You're only saying thank you if you remember to call me and remind me when we have meetings.
I'll let Andrea know, she'll get it out to you.
Senior volunteers, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Steve?
I don't think so. We've got fifty, about fifty plus cord of wood cut and getting ready to be split out at the institution to be distributed to needy families as identified through the program at the senior center. And the officer said about thirty more cord out of Collins Pine that they donated to us. So, we should have about a hundred cord of wood cut, split, ready to go. So that should last us a few years. So, pretty thankful for Collins Pine and for Officer Fitzpatrick in getting that done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and move into communication comments and informational items. Council, do you have any questions or comments on what's here?
I like the information on the top five public and private employees. Private employers.
Interesting, that was.
No other comments? We'll go ahead and move into the department reports. No Chief Camp?
No, you may know Chief Camp was put back on mill work by his doctor with his injuries. So Matt Gray is acting chief at this point in time. He doesn't come on until four o'clock.
Is he?
Well, anyway, I didn't think to invite you to come, along with my fella earlier this day on the work session.
You're going for record, are you?
I'm going for record, so I might as well get them all out there. I didn't invite Matt, I should have.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Utley's not here, do you know where he may be?
My understanding is Mr. Utley is on a search assisting in Siskiyou County. A search and rescue.
Chief Dennis, do you have anything to add to your report?
I have nothing further.
We do have a lot of people applying for someone, burn permits, I see.
Yeah, last month that was one of the highest in the month I ever.
I, yeah, I was surprised.
Scoundled on how many we have.
Everybody's trying to get all the burning done before it hits.
Everybody's obeying the law.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
When does it, when does it close?
Not until fire season starts.
So tomorrow.
Probably may, depends on the spring, but yeah, what it does say is people are paying attention that they need to be getting permission.
They need to get it.
Yeah, that's good, exactly. No Mr. Anderson, no Mr. Wilkie, Ray, you have anything to add to your report?
I don't think so.
I'll go further from the council. We'll go ahead and move into the consent calendar. It consists of the March work session minutes, the March 10th regular session minutes, February financial, February financials, and the February AP. Any questions or comments, corrections? If there are none, I accept the motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion of second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, mayor council updates. The mayor's been pretty lazy, I haven't got anything to report, so.
What?
I know, shocked you, huh? Okay, Sandy, you have anything?
Last week I attended the Lake County Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting. No, it's listening. And there was a special meeting, it was about the new, uh, vote court and budget for Department Corrections and Children's Office. And then the Saturday market had a meeting at the same day at the same time, so I did miss that, but they are gearing up for the season.
Okay, do you know anything like price for booth prices or anything like for this year, is it the same?
Yes, it will be the same. I think it's five dollars for one day, and I believe it's fifty dollars for the season.
Okay. Sharon?
I've been babysitting the chamber for the last two days. It's probably lucky that we're not in a heavy tourist season because I certainly don't know anything when you're up there. But I've managed to fumble around and find maps and visit with people, so it's been kind of entertaining, taking phone calls. I had a visit with a fellow member of the railroad board, and neither one of us are getting emails or notices, and so we're going to go up to the courthouse and talk to the person in charge and find out what's going on with that. Because I think with the whole Red Rock possibilities, that puts a lot of pressure on the railroad, and we think we kind of need to know what's going on there. I have a U-Pick meeting on, whenever the 22nd is, yeah, probably right after the 21st.
Okay, or right before the 23rd, I'm not sure.
It's probably a Wednesday, I don't know. I'll hit there.
Thank you. Michael?
Just wanted to mention that the gun show was a great success. I wasn't there, but I was told that they did very well, and the gun club is making some great strides secondary to all of these events.
I might add to your gun news that there's a 10-22 shoot up the canyon this weekend. I believe it starts at 10:00 a.m., 10 till 2:00, but it's 10-22, junior shooters shoot free for a blue pop, so grab your kids and grandkids and come on up.
That's fine.
Mike?
Mayor attended several economic development type meetings in regards to different projects that are underway and being looked at in the area, one of which is the Main Street. Sherry Stewart will be here tomorrow for a pretty lengthy, I guess, discussion in regards to getting things underway here in our community for Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Ray?
A couple of things, just, Mike mentioned the Main Street. The steering committee group, I think is what we refer to it as, is going to meet tomorrow to make some further efforts in organization and understanding the Main Street process and philosophy, and beginning to move that forward. They'll meet in our meeting room next door at four, from four to eight o'clock tomorrow afternoon, so. The other thing I just, I wanted to mention, I've been telling everybody I can think of, your assistance would also be appreciated if you see somebody, but we don't have a pool manager, a swimming pool manager in summer, and we've been recruiting, I think it's been in vapor for three weeks. I've been working with the lady that did our lifeguard training from OIT the last three years, I believe she's done that. She is getting information out around, around OIT and KCC and over in that area. So, also, the last I knew of, at least they didn't have a swim coach either, or a swim team, so. Anyway, if you know of anybody, you know, send them our way.
Does it have to be a full-time position?
At this point, we'll take any.
It's critical.
Sharon, I don't know if you have time or not.
But they do have to go through the training, although, is the training available?
This is the main stumbling block we have in needing to get somebody as soon as possible, and that is that our pool manager has to be, we have to have somebody who's a certified pool operator. There's a class they have to go to. The last time that class is available was about the, I'm trying to schedule with me, but it's like the 13th and 14th of May in Bend. It's a Thursday, Friday, or a Friday, Saturday. So.
If it doesn't have to be a full-time position, just sort of a sub, you know, especially on weekends, would be okay, but we do have a part-time person working in our community who does have.
Certification.
Certification in lifeguarding and that sort of thing, and that's if it's on a, you said Wednesday and Thursday, or Thursday and Friday?
No, the training is either a Thursday, Friday, or a Friday, Saturday, I can't remember which, Sharon.
That person does it work those days?
The, uh, the other thing, one of my fallback positions is, you know, again, we have to have that person that's certified, so. Would be, you know, we've talked here, town hall staff, if nothing else, we'll get one of our town hall folks certified, so we have somebody who can be responsible for the chemical balance.
If you just have a supervisory person that can.
And then we'll do, we'll do some other stuff, so. But anyway, I, I was talking.
We might talk to her.
It's not urgent, it's getting, it's approaching.
They have the training.
Yep, that part is urgent.
The training has to be done.
What's the minimum age?
Uh, you know, I believe you have to be eighteen to be a manager, director, or you know, a department head is what it really amounts to, so. And probably the certification requires somebody eighteen to have the, I don't know that. Let's see, the kids that are lifeguards, I've got a couple of phone calls, I did one, some of the older ones, to see if they just missed our notice, or what. Samantha Gallagher is taking her job at Westin Oregon, so that's why she's not returning.
When will you begin to advertise for lifeguards?
Uh, probably the first week of May, for a couple of weeks, so. And we've talked about this all over again, one of the, one of the new business items. But I'm very lucky for a pool manager.
Okay, that's it?
You'll be back from your vacation in five days. We're really getting desperate, bud.
Yeah, that's too desperate.
I don't know, you saved the whole pool, I think it's pretty.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, but, you know. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into new business. Our first item is to discuss the approval for trees around the new soccer field. Mr. Fred Smith, the floor is yours.
I think we had a sheet paper that kind of outlines what we plan to do. This was Mr. John Roberts, he's the maintenance person, or the maintenance person in charge of the school.
All school maintenance.
Yeah, so John, John has all kinds of fun. My classes, what we were doing was, we were just doing a problem solving situation, and what came up was what kinds of trees to plant around the new soccer field. And my students did a bunch of research, and then they found out the trees they first wanted to choose weren't going to work, and so then we went with another set of trees, and that wasn't going to work, and so we did some more research. And the list of trees, what we're going to do is we're going to plant equal numbers of incense cedar, modoc cyprus, some Hondos, and blueberries, and then one, because I couldn't get my students back now, we will plant one sequoia gigantis in the corner with the best land.
Some of this land right here, it's just super rocky.
This is, this is super rocky.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, rocky, it is.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one, is all super rocky. We dig down in the back though, it's just solid rock where they hold the hillside, was that. So these trees got to be really super tough from there. We also want them to all be conifers or, you know, or evergreen, so we don't have any leaf issues.
Just, just a quick question, why, why is this soccer field doing trees, and it's actually a question from our board here, and we don't have around the ball fields or the ball fields or anything like that? You got any idea, or?
I, I, I'm first year teacher here, and, and this was handed to me, and so I'm just making it happen. I, I don't know the history of the lies behind, so. So it's got trees there, I, I have some contacts with Pacific Power, and I know that they buy trees for projects like this, and I got in contact with them. They seem to think that they could fund this, and so I will have one of my students write a proposal. If the council approves, I'll have them write the proposal to Pacific Power for funding their trees, and hopefully as we get the sod laid in the spring and sidewalks put around and that kind of stuff, hopefully we will teach my kids a little bit about irrigation, a little drip irrigation and stuff as well.
You, you mentioned that, that your students researched these trees and went through about fifteen different kinds of, for, we found, I, I did have a couple of questions. I too looked at the trees, and the one question I had is, the incense cedar is noted as, I can't say the right word, an halogen tree or whatever, with things like that, just wondering if that's a good choice around a sporting facility? If they considered that at all?
We.
I thought the ponderosas were awesome, that's, that's a good choice.
Well, it was really kind of interesting, because when the, when the process began, the students wanted color, and so they wanted ornamental pearl, ornamental pear, and ornamental plum. And so it would give it, it would give it a pink and, and white kind of hue in the spring, and then the pear in the, in the fall goes, goes orange, red, black, or orange, red, brown. And, but what we learned was that those won't handle this much.
And incense cedar will tolerate the rocky conditions.
Yeah. Good choice on all your trees, they all do that.
I think the tree situation, this is more our beautification for the school, because I'm kind of in charge of that, so as you, as, for the next few years, I'll be planting more trees, because right now it was kind of.
Have you done that area by the?
Yes, I did.
That looks really nice, really nice.
And we're working our way around, we're pulling out old shrubs, planting them, new stuff. The whole of this school's going to be looking a lot better in the next few years.
My kids will get a real exercise, because there's like almost six, seven feet of concrete there in sidewalks, so.
Now, every place we have a circle, you're going to have a tree there?
That's correct, those are, if, if I brought the other drawing, which is to scale, you'd see they're right on thirty foot on center. I mean, that's what the, that's what the.
And they're going to be on a drip irrigation.
So I, I was just going to ask, I know the answer to this, but as for the record, there's no overhead obstacles, power lines, like the streetlights or any of those things.
Since we're not doing one middle tree, so.
In, in fact, in fact, there's one pole left, and I don't know why it hasn't been, because you've done really good, because you got rid of the others.
The streetlight poles.
No, no, the streetlight poles are cool, I'm, I'm all for light, but there's one there that looks like it's a cable. You know, all there, all there is is cable, the cable box on it, so there's still one of those left, so. No, it's not siren, no, the siren's further up, on the other side.
Also, I, I wasn't, I don't know the history of when the ball fields, baseball fields, softball fields were built, so. This project has gone through town planning for review and approval, and part of the town planning process is approving of a landscape plan. And the trees are the result of that requirement to have a landscape plan. Now, why that wasn't part of the baseball process and projects from back in the early 2000s or early, I don't, I didn't go look at the commissioner, I didn't even think about.
Is there any, is there any plan for seating, or?
Yes, yeah, actually, these, these two square areas here will be the bleachers, okay? The teams will sit over here, the scoreboard, the scoreboard, if one we get, will be right here by the concession stand, so that, so that it's angled, so the people who are watching can, can see the scoreboard as well as the teams.
I got a quick question too, Brett. Is there sidewalk along this side of the field?
Yeah, it's going, it's going to go all the way along the street curve, all the way around to here, that's my, almost.
Okay, and then these trees will be planted between the sidewalk and the field.
Can we get a ramp for that too?
Correct.
Can we get a ramp for that too?
Well, I've, I've been told that the money exists, so all I know is.
From the sidewalks?
My kids, my kids will start digging next week, so that's all I know.
It's going to be all through here, this is all going to be irrigated and all lawn through here, so.
I have a question concerning this.
Just verify what you're saying, this still has to go in front of the planning then, or?
No, the planning, the, the planning commission, as I understand it, deferred to the council and approved.
Yes, sir. I have a question concerning the sequoia, as putting a single sequoia with the poor root system, the root system that they have, and the wind that we get here, would it either be better to put in two or three? Together as a, as a group for the support, or not, because of the high amount of winds that we get in this area, and if it goes up eighty, a hundred, three hundred and fifty feet?
No, it's not going to. Up here by Hall Motors.
Yes.
Getting old Hall Motors, there's, there's, it looks like an old homestead or house that looks like it burned down or something.
Way on that trash corner.
That's, that's a sequoia. And, and so, I have no idea how long it's been there, but I don't anticipate this thing getting over a hundred feet.
Sharon could probably tell you.
But.
But we have thought of it.
Yes, yeah, and the worst part about it, and I will tell you this, and the reason why, that when we talked to, um, what's the, what's the place in Bonanza Rock, Rock Bottom? They said, now you know for about the first five years, in the winter, it's going to go brown. And I go, yeah. And they go, you going to be okay with that? I go, about two weeks into May, when everything starts greening up, it will shed all the dead, and it'll be green again. That's what they do, because in kind of falls, we have a number of these, and in the winter, they are, they're brown. But, you know, it's like peels in the first quarter inch, and then in the spring, all that just falls off and goes from there.
And maintenance gets to rake it all up?
Huh? Maintenance gets to rake it up, I guess, I don't know. But, but that's it, that's a, that's a big question. We're, we're taking a chance with it. We're hoping that because it's kind of in the middle of all the fields and that, because we're going to put it all the way deep into this corner, that it won't get quite as much, you know, as if we had it down here where it's going to get way along, so.
A little bit of better soil down there.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's actually the best soil. Because I go, we have to, we're going to find someplace where there's some good soil, we'll do it down.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on the council?
I think it looks great.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, we'll take the vote real quick and see how things go. Okay? Actually, I need a, excuse me, a. Motion, thank you, Sharon. Still talking to me. I need a motion to approve the request from the, I don't know what you guys call yourselves. I'll talk to the school district, okay?
I'd make a motion that we approve the plan for the planting of the trees around the new soccer field by the Lake School District.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion of second to approve the tree plan as presented by School District Seven. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, close, motion carries unanimous, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ray, do you want a copy of this for your records? Please go clear. Okay, good enough.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
It's good to see you again. It's a tough one, it's busy.
Yeah. Hope you don't come by and.
I'm running a hundred of your run, plus sprinklers, and I take all pounded out.
Gentlemen, I got a maintain down, congratulations. Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, guys.
Our next item is a new Pine Creek Fire Department request.
You know, Dennis could answer specific questions, but years ago, the town got a compressor for filling the oxygen, the air tanks for the fire department. This last year, we acquired a new one, given to us by.
District Five overrun, Jackson.
Jackson Captain, I couldn't think of Jack, mentor's all I can think of. And so we've installed that, now have our own, or a new, uh, air compressor. Air compressor for our air bottles. And new Pine Creek Fire Department would like to have our old one, that we no longer are using. And, you know, again, it's not been of any cost to us, and it's really something that seems to happen a lot through fire departments in particular, is they hand me down some donating trade equipment here and there, so. They, they contacted Dennis some, you know, a couple, three months ago, and there's a letter in your packet that they're asking us, and you know, Dennis and I are recommending that you grant permission to donate that compressor we have to the Pine Creek Fire Department.
My only question is, our other rural fire departments, is it just kind of a first come, first served, and Pine Creek got in there first, and they had the biggest need for it?
Thomas Creek Westside ended up acquiring one here a few years back on the ground, so they have one. Pine Creek needed one, and it leaves our burden on testing their bottles and filling their bottles and stuff, but I believe Paisley has one also, so, just trying to keep it local on the ones that don't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The council?
See no reason why we're not.
I know, if we're not using it, someone else should be able to, for sure.
That's what I was going to ask, do we need a backup?
The way they're put in and installed, it would be hard to use it as a backup. Generally, we've got a, our cascade system, we fill up five or six bottles, large bottles, and they'll refill all of our tanks at least once or twice. So generally, if the system goes down, we're able to get it fixed before we need it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I accept the motion.
I move we approve giving, donating the SDV eight compressor unit from the Lakeview Fire Department to the New Pine Creek Fire Department.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion of second to approve the request from the New Pine Creek Fire Department. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, close, motion carries unanimous. Okay. Our next item is Resolution Number 876 in the matter of approving returning playground equipment to the Lake County 4C Council. I think that's why you ladies are here, possibly.
Can you give some background maybe first?
And you, Sharon?
Sure.
Please. The 4C Council operated the Sunshine Center for a number of years as a nonprofit organization. About 2012, I believe, they were disbanding their, their operation, the, the Sunshine Center, the Head Start and, let's see. Not Head Start, but daycare and preschool, that's what I can name preschool. So, the YMCA came along at about that time, as you recall, and picked up some of those pieces, and everybody was working together to help the YMCA operate that facility. Well, before they, before the YMCA came along, the 4C Council, a nonprofit organization, was granted some play equipment. It's a modern, I think it's plastic, but it's play structure, as well as two teeter totters that are there at the property. There's also a big old swing set that was already at the property. So, the history is that the YMCA operated for a couple of years, and in this past summer, at, at the end of the summer, they closed their operation here at Lakeview, weren't able to find staff, and, you know, for a whole host of reasons, they left town. And with, the facility's been sitting there vacant since then. Uh, the Four C Council has been reorganized, uh, I guess they, they're still called the Four C Council, but they are now the, the group that is operating, uh, the new bright beginnings, uh, facility down at the. Church next, next to Brooklyn, across from Brooklyn, so, uh, so the Four C, this equipment doesn't really, we, we never had anything to do with acquiring it, it was given to the Four C Council, we simply acquired it because when the Four C Council gave their interest over to the YMCA, the equipment was there and it was part of the, of the overall transaction that became Lakeview and the YMCA. Well, now the YMCA is gone, we don't have anybody using the facility as, as daycare or preschool, and they really have a need for it, the new operation that they have. And by rights, you know, in my mind, they, it's theirs, uh, it's been in our facility, if they were still there, it would be theirs to use, but, we only have it because that was part of the understanding when the Y began operations. They're gone, and now it seems to me to make sense that we grant their desire to reacquire, take possession of the playground equipment and be able to move it to their new facility, so. And they, they are here, did I answer any questions, if you have any, or further clarify?
Do you have any, any spiel you wanna give first, or you're just there for questions?
Any, um, it actually wasn't gifted in the Four C Council, we, we did purchase it.
Grand.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we had the.
Cecil, the elder, what did that? Cecil Elder?
No.
Hit that.
No, it was, it was, um, we got a grant to do that, fire, additional fire exit downstairs.
Right.
And this was the money that was left over.
So, is it both of the plastic things, the, the ones further away from the highway? What are you, and the, there's.
Not, not that one.
There's one right behind.
Okay, so, I live right across from there, and I have to tell you, that's down in the city. Gets a lot from you, so it would be a real shame.
No, not that one.
It would be, and it's, it's beautiful, I think it had been there, not even quite a year before the Y closed. It's shiny and pretty, and every time I take my father to, he's always wanting to go over to the fence to hang on that one. And so, the original tent was definitely for preschool aged children to enjoy it, and this would be a way that it would be much loved and appreciated, and so we were just really hoping.
And you're gonna locate it in the back?
Of the Faith Center building, there's that lot, and we were in the process of making that into a playground.
Because when I first turned that, I thought, how close to that parking lot are they gonna put the kids? No, no, no.
Yes, so, yeah, everything's ready to go, so, you know, there's a process as we level the ground. We wanna put that equipment in, bring the play chips in, all of that, so.
Agreed.
Yes.
Any other question from the council?
The only thing I have is.
I think it's an excellent idea to return it to the right owners, yeah, so, I'd accept the motion.
The only thing I have to say is that at the bottom of the, uh, resolution, it has Christian Pabola's name.
Oh, it does have Christian's name on there.
Where is it?
Ray.
I will.
Oops.
Ray, is this number three?
Well, I did this two or three days ago. Obviously, I found a template and, uh, and I didn't change all the, I got the dates right, I think.
Yes, you did. Okay, so I will still accept the motion with a clarification on the, the form if you would like, but, so, Resolution Number Eight Seven Six.
Okay, if you want to.
Yes, you may.
Sorry.
I move we approve Resolution Number Eight Seventy Six, uh, in the matter of approving returning playground equipment to the Lake County Four C Council with the noted correction.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution Number Eight Seven Six in the matter of approving returning playground equipment to the Lake County Four C Council with the correction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimous, you got it, girls.
Thank you.
You just have to move it.
Yes, yes, that's line up to you. Thank you. We have all practiced to get it. Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is, it's just kind of a note, um, to keep the council in the loop, that I did approve a liquor license for Jerry's. It doesn't need a council action to do it, but we do like to keep the council informed of where we're, what we're doing and where we're doing it. So, anyway, it's just a notation, and I approved that, they needed to get rolling so that they could get the restaurant open as soon as possible, so. And, and I'm not sure when that is, but it's in the near future.
Yeah, Saturday.
Saturday is when it's opening.
This Saturday?
Oh, wow.
Oh, that's, that's great news, thank you.
Just ask the newspaper guy, they'll know everything.
Thank you.
Okay, and now our next item is a summer kickoff festival, Ray, would you like to?
Well, yeah, this is, again, thinking of the pool, uh, and not having a manager, uh, it'll, last year, we talked about it after we had the grand opening, rededication of the swimming pool. It was, uh, about ten days before the pool actually opened, and, and we did it on a Sunday afternoon, I believe the dedication was in June, and, and, uh, then we had the pool open for, I think, three hours, and at the same time, uh, again, remembering, the weather can be fatal in the first part of June, so we never, no, last year was fantastic, quite honestly. But, uh, the swim team used the opportunity to do a lot of fundraising, Dennis left, but the, uh, the volunteer fire department raised a lot of the money for the, fill the boot for the fireworks, uh, the, the thing that we didn't promote well enough, but, uh, they were there, and, and I don't know if they're interested again, within the Saturday market, uh, set up there for kind of a trial run for the year.
They've actually asked about it, so I'll, I'll get in touch with Karen, I would ask.
The ukulele band was there, uh, provided, you know, some entertainment. Anyway, we talked about it afterwards, it was a, a great time, was had by many, I think, and we talked about maybe doing that as an annual event. So, I guess I'm asking, do you want to organize something like that? Again, I think the ladies here at the office are willing to, to help, was that, uh, some, you know, Saturday market needs to have some advance notice so that they can be ready, I know the swim team has asked about doing that again. Just a couple of days, I see Mike reaching for his calendar, uh, the last day of school is the ninth of June. Graduation is actually the, Saturday the sixth. I guess I'm, I, without a manager, just yet, I'm a little hesitant, I would say that we'll open the pool no later than the fifteenth, which would be a Monday, uh, that, that's usually, we usually open on Mondays, we use that weekend for, uh, before then for lifeguard training and, and those things, but school usually gets out on a Thursday or Friday, so it's a little bit different schedule, but sure than what we've been used to. But, with all of those things said, I guess it looks to me like we either have to do it on the Sunday afternoon following graduation, or we need to do it on the thirty first.
That's Memorial Day, that won't work.
No, Memorial is actually the twenty fifth.
Is it?
Yeah, but, what, what would be wrong if, if we did it on the fourteenth? You know, that following Monday would be.
Depends on that swim team, or swim, uh, instruction thing, don't they use Saturday and Sunday?
Oh, for the, for, we usually use Saturday.
Well, if they could do, if school's out on the ninth, they could do the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, tenth, eleventh, well, to get their training done.
Part of that, though, we have to schedule around the, uh, the lady that comes from Clamath Falls that does the training, and she isn't available until Friday afternoon the twelfth. She might be able to do part of the training on a, on a Saturday or Sunday prior to that, but she can't do it all, uh, in one weekend, so.
She couldn't do it on Friday afternoon and Saturday?
She can't get it all done that quick, yeah, it's gonna take more than that, so. Well.
June twentieth, I think.
You know, I think last year, if I recall, we did it on the Sunday after graduation.
We did, it was.
It was, it was, it was well attended, and, you know, I don't know, there was a debate, I know, about whether graduation was gonna be a problem, we're gonna lose, high school seniors are going to leave to go on their senior trip or, and whatever, we'll have, you know, people are tired from graduation event, but at the same time, last year, it seemed to work well out that day, so.
Well, and, and there were a lot of people in town for graduation.
There were extra people.
You know, so that, uh, it was early enough, they could go and check out the pool and, and.
First, we did have that attraction of the grand opening of the, of the new pool, so, we don't have that for this year, so I guess part of it is, you know, last year, we provided cake, Mike did a lot of work gathering up, uh, prizes.
With prizes for kids.
Anyway, we probably don't need to do that much this year, but we need to, we need a few things, uh, free swimming, again, from June.
I did, free day swimming and cake and ice cream at the park, and, you know, there was a lot of camaraderie and, and well received, so. But would it hurt even if we did it as late as the twenty first of June, just, you know?
Well, except you don't have free swim.
The what?
The free swim thing, where you're kinda getting people jazzed up and stuff.
I think, I think that weekend after graduation.
I think if you can pull it together for that weekend after graduation, that's it.
June seventh is a. That would be June seventh.
The problem will be, will the pool be set up, and do you have enough experienced lifeguards from last year to work it?
And that's part of what I.
Cause you won't have the newer.
The newest won't be certified yet, but, you know, we should, we'll need at least three lifeguards, certified lifeguards.
I think that could be the tentative date, depending on what happens in the next couple of weeks.
I guess that's what I'm looking for, two things, one is, you wanna do it, two.
We have so few community events like that, that I think if we could start that.
It was really a good fundraising opportunity for some, some, and there may be some others that wanted, want to participate.
Whoever was, I can't remember was selling the, um, food there, they ran out.
Well, they, they sold three hundred tri tips that weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do, do we also sell memberships? We will have, uh, season's passes and stuff there for the pool. So, like you were saying, the earlier, the better for that kind of, because it's getting people to know.
True, yeah.
Sunday the seventh, I think, is, is fine, that's a week before we probably will. Target date, and then see how it goes as far as recruiting. Well, and I'll talk to some of the other organizations that are, that'll wanna participate and make sure that that works for them. But it gives us, uh, you know, we know we wanna go ahead and we'll do it, and, you know, we'll spend a little money, you know, it won't be a lot, but a couple hundred bucks or something on stuff to pour it and get organized and some advertising, and, uh, so we'll, we'll point at that date, the seventh of June, and, uh, if that is suitable for the other people that we're hoping to participate or did last year, then we'll just kind of begin to firm that up, and that'd be our target.
Who's had a swim team this year?
Uh, Teresa Deckers, who I've been talking with, uh, so we're kind of recruiting together in the climate area for, for swim coach, so, and, and pool manager.
Steve, there's a, you're recruiting for more officers or, or staff at your place, put a little caveat on with it, says we have summer appointment for the spouse, you know?
Work together.
You know, it, it, I, I wouldn't be concerned if it wasn't for needing to have to have somebody who's certified to operate the pool. The state requires that now, and, you know, a few years ago, we could hire, we could interview the lifeguards and, and, you know, the most qualified, the most senior one could be your pool manager, and you didn't have a problem, well, now we've gotta be certified, so, uh, it makes it more difficult.
I kind of like having one of the employees at the city be the, be a certified person, because we're, yeah, because we are, we seem to be getting people that are stable and young now, that are going to be here for a while, and I think that that would alleviate some of the problem.
Yeah.
It, it would help a lot where the certification is good for two or three years, and, uh, you know, if you, you manage her every year, then you're, every year, you're investing in training, and it's about a three hundred dollar, you know, plus some expenses of the motel and stuff of training, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, I just think that alleviates the headache.
There is a problem with that, in fact, that, uh, Public Works is enormously helpful up there, and they will train the people to do the chlorine, and they train, you know, how to pick up, you know, do those rolling those covers and stuff like that, but, uh, just the time involved in scheduling and doing all that sort of thing will take a lot of your manager's time, too.
Yeah, so, you're right, so it, it makes sense if you have somebody who can be responsible for the chemical issues, you know, the, the, of balancing the chlorine and, and all those things at the pool, they do have to be available, you know, they don't have to be on site all the time, but they need to be available, so, we'll have to talk a little bit about, if we go that route, about being, uh, available on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays and stuff in case there's a issue comes up, but, but I would expect that whomever, if, if it were Amy that were the, were the certified pool operator, that she's gonna train somebody that's at the pool all the time, to what to work for, and I, I don't know anything about doing it, quite honestly, I just know it has to be done, so, it's not getting any easier. All right. Okay, so we'll, we'll use those dates and we'll go forward with some plans.
Sounds good. We have one other item, which is our town hall upgrades, Ray, would you like to?
Well, yes, and I, I would start out by saying that last year, uh, in our budget that we're working in right now, we set aside some funds to do some things here around town hall. The things, carpet, uh, for one, uh, we have been, uh, we did a little modification of the desk at the utility purchase office out there, but we actually had a proposal from, from the gathering place, uh, that organization to operate that, that they wanted to, uh, upgrade the desk, build a new desk facility for out there, and then they also wanna put a, or offer to put a mural of the old town of Lakeview on the wall, one of those big wallpaper murals. So, they looked into that, and it, and it turned out they wanna do the mural, the desk, the upgrade, they have a carpenter who will build it for them, but it turned out to be about a twenty-six hundred dollar desk, they want, they, they offered to share that fifty-fifty with us. That's the desk that's on, in front, on, in that picture in front of you, so, um, so, before we do that, though, I don't know if any of you have noticed, but at that, that workstation, the floor slopes off to the window, so, whenever you sit there in a, in a nice rolling chair, you tend to wanna fly, and you're always scooping up.
It's not a little slope.
So, so I had, uh, one of our local contractors come in and just look, you know, look at it, uh, for somewhere around six hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars, you know, they can take the floor up, do some things there, and they'll level that up, uh, you know, they'll kind of have to uncover it before we'll know exactly what, what has to be done, but, uh, so there, so that's one thing, that needs to be done first. The flooring, the brown gold, uh, sample of carpet, Mike brought that back from Clamath Falls, uh, Diamonds has that, and, um, the reason that we're looking at that particular piece is they had a major project in Clamath Falls that they provided that carpet to, and overestimated the amount they needed by about a hundred and twenty yards. They have enough, almost enough of that carpet to do all of the main floor from the hallway, not the other room, but from the hallway this way, they've got about a hundred and twenty yards, and it's gonna take about a hundred and thirty yards for two thousand dollars, uh, for the carpet that they have in stock, which is, you know, it's a, a, a commercial grade carpet, it's, uh, about forty-five dollars a yard, regular price, and we're getting it for a little over twenty dollars a yard, um, so.
It's ugly.
Which is necessary for a castle building.
They do have, even though they don't have enough of it to do all of this floor.
You're a guy, and you think, any guys like brown.
I like the price, is what I like.
I like the price, but I don't like the, I, color.
They can get, uh, you know, we're gonna need another ten or twelve yards more than what they have available, we'd have to pay the regular price for that, if, if we wanted to do that, so, so, two thousand plus, uh, say four hundred and fifty dollars for another ten yards, so twenty-five hundred dollars for carpet.
Who installs it?
Well, that's not installed, that would be if, you know, a bunch of us wanted to get together on a weekend and do it, Ronnie Voe. Ronnie Vo and Dennis did the installation of that two foot square type, type of stuff at the, the training room at the fire, fire hall there about two years ago. In fact, there's a blue carpet behind that that's.
That's nicer.
The wall that is the carpet that they installed over there, but there's not enough of that left to do ours, so.
I like that.
You shouldn't have showed us that because that looks pretty good. That other stuff even looks uglier.
The color carpet we have now, if it's a worn out, it's perfect.
I just brought it over because, you know, I was kind of wanted to think about it a little bit, I guess.
It comes in sections like that.
It comes in two foot sections they glue down and if, if there's a, you know, I, I don't mind bringing stuff myself, but then I'm just a guy.
Yeah.
Sammy was thinking about the color with the, with the wall. There is a little bit of blue in it, so it's not totally off all of it. We can repaint the, the wall, I guess.
And with the brown on the desk, I think, I, I think that's about the prettiest carpet I have ever seen.
I know, I, I did. Especially at that price.
Yes, and I said the grand Sierra this weekend.
I think that carpet would look much better.
I think that carpet would look much better without the blue walls because that just doesn't, it just doesn't match. I'm telling you.
Blue will go together perfectly.
A gallon of.
You know the percentage of men who are colorblind.
Lost the way to dress a couple of weeks ago.
A gallon of pink that'll match the black.
Would be even uglier.
A lot less than an extra.
So then we have ugly walls and ugly carpet.
Thirty-five dollars a gallon.
Oh, I thought you said thirty-five.
I don't know, thirty-five dollars.
Anyway. I'm making a motion that we accept this carpet.
So let me, the, the rest of the story, like I looked just before the meeting today just to kind of get a, a rough idea of where we are. And we've got in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars, you know, left that we budgeted to do some things here at town hall. I spent a little money on the heat pumps this last winter to get, get them up and running. And so we've got enough money to, to, to do the things that we wanted to do, you know, in this part of the, of town hall, so. Mike, Mike had some other thoughts that he wanted to do. I don't know if you wanted to bring, talk about your idea of.
I, I talked to Ray about this before, a couple of times we've talked about it, but want to raise the, the dais or whatever you call it. But I don't know if you've been to county commissioner meeting or whatever, but they're just slightly elevated above the, the general public or whatever. I'd like to do the same thing in here. We, we gotta double check. I think you'd go a ten inch step and still be legal, but it might be eight inch. But anyway, from, from about where the door is right there, raise this eight inches. Put the table and stuff on it. I want to change the council setup. Want the mayor in the middle, the president here, the next senior, next senior, next senior, and Mr. Bogardis moves over here. He doesn't need to be at the town council, at the council table. So, so that's my plan. And on top of that, if we raise it eight inches here where, where Amy and Ray are here, where they go along here, we'll raise it four. So that we've got an eight inch raise here.
So you can trip on all, a dog on the level.
Or just roll right up and.
No, you'd put a, you'd put a back, you'd put a thing here for, for like when we have a bunch of meeting or whatever.
I don't know if I would be able to. I've still got three years left. I may not be able to get upstairs.
We'll put in a, we'll put in a lift for you.
Okay.
Michael and Mike. But anyway, it, it just gives a little bit more, more formal setting. You know, we're gonna have a nice office out front that looks very professional. We'll have a nice desk for them. We got nice new carpet. We can paint the walls if we need to, but I just think it gives a little bit more of a professional. And if you've ever watched any of these shows on PBS or something, the other council rooms, and I've been to about three different ones myself, they're, they're all have a, a raised. Am I saying that right? Dais, is that the right word? They all have a, a raised dais so that they're just, you know, not, not above anybody, but it's just a clear distinction of who's doing what. And I, I just thought this room would work real well for that and also the same for our staff over here, so. So along with what.
I, I got an estimate on what the cost.
Well, if you take that, get that estimate and then if it will help us get better carpeting, then you can cancel that and use it for the carpeting.
No, I think it'll leave up for discussion.
What we've talked about already with the carpet, with the leveling that area out there and the, our thirteen hundred fifty, our fifty percent on the desk, we're already at sixty-five fifty.
Right, yeah.
So to do the elevations that you want to do, I don't, I think we're right at our ten K right there with the discounted carpet.
I, I'd probably be close. Yeah, you gotta do, you know, two by sixes, two by eights, whatever.
You'll get there.
You gotta probably put tongue and groove, four by eight sheets of flooring on here, on this part.
You would have to put some kind of railing.
Huh?
You were talking about some kind of railing to protect the people with their backs there.
Real tall, but it just something so that if you did have a roll chair there, you don't roll off the back and wreck somebody's neck or whatever.
Or to go from that wall to that wall?
Certainly would.
Well, then you wouldn't have to wait that long.
Well, it's the only thing you'd have is just this, this front area except for two alleyways. But for when you have a larger meeting with, like the budget meeting, but we use those chairs that don't roll.
People still push back.
Yeah. But it would have to come out quite a bit.
You can put a break up there, a four inch break or whatever.
It would have to come out quite a bit further than where we are now if they're gonna have.
Cause we have a sign on both sides.
Yeah, well, if you do that, it's going to be about here.
The door. Well, that would be.
Yeah. When, when people walk in just to, when they walk in rather than trip over because there's a ledge right there and not noticing when they walk into the room.
There, there won't be legs for coming into the door. If you come in and turn this way, it would be a step up.
Yeah, but I think you, I, I just see people meandering in and looking at different people and then hitting the, the curb over here on the side. So you, if, if, all you have to have is in front of this, isn't it?
This what?
Well, yeah, unless of course you're gonna, you know, when we do have the budget committee, we do have ten of you around the.
Oh, okay, that's right. That is true. Okay.
So that was the reason.
See, I think you could have your budget committee meetings over next door.
Yeah, you could all do that.
There's a possibility too.
I'm happy staying on this level personally, but.
I really don't have a problem with where we're at now, but I.
I understand that, sir, I do. I just don't know that this room fits it that well.
As much as I can say, one of the things that I dislike about going to the commissioners meetings is the fact that they are elevated above me.
I don't like that either.
And, and, and I, I don't care.
It's intimidating. I know.
And that's the intention.
Ray and I have been over there for meetings in, in the commissioner room and they've invited us up to the, to set up a higher throne, so.
And that's what, and that's the reason you have, yeah, that's the reason you have the dais. Is to set you up, yes, being at a different level than those people that are coming in.
That, that's the point then.
I know. That's the reason I suggest not to do it at all.
I, I, one problem is I don't want you over here with us.
That's gonna change whether we, whether we elevate it or not, that's gonna change the, the setup at the council here.
Well, yeah, I don't care about that, but I, I like just not being up higher.
Yeah.
Well, so are we going to take advantage of a, of a golden opportunity to get some new depth carpet or are we going to, or, or not?
Yeah, I guess we need a decision on that, whether the.
I don't think that we would ever get all six, all five of us to agree.
You're not gonna get me to agree on that carpet. And I may lose, but I'm not gonna agree with that carpet.
Girls in the front office say about the brown carpet? There's three of you out there.
Hey, that, that doesn't matter what they say.
These are the ladies who did their beautiful gray and white.
They, they are under pressure because they have.
So.
The only thing I would.
Two ladies out front like it, one does not. Okay?
So there's three of us who have good taste.
Three of you that have good taste.
The, the only thing that I would raise a question on is to stick there that I, I'm hardcore on it and that is shopping locally. And I, I, you know, as long as we've checked out with our local carpeting unit or if they could provide something, you know, I mean, that's all you can do is ask.
I forgot to mention, Mike, that I was going to ask our local people if anybody could, could make us a.
Be a really.
Something that was competitive with this as far as, as amount.
And I, I doubt they will with the price. I, I, I'm not trying to discount that, but I just think we.
What, what's the price if we go with the blue, order enough to do our hundred and forty-five yards?
Well, the, that carpet is a little lighter as far as the whole thing, but that carpet in some other color, you can get it. It is about forty-five dollars a yard and so forty-five times a hundred, here's forty-five hundred and.
So we're six thousand dollars.
Six thousand dollars worth of carpet probably.
We have ten.
Yeah, but we still got thirteen others. Raise the floor.
We're not gonna raise the floor.
No, I mean level. They could slip the rest of it.
Why don't we ask Fred and his classes to build this?
Cause we want it this year. I don't think they could, I don't think a shop class could build that between now and the end of the school year.
Well, don't they use.
Somebody else volunteered to do it.
Well, that's a pretty nice offer for somebody. Offer what they're doing to split the price, so that's a pretty gracious offer.
Yeah, it's a carpenter. It's not a student doing it.
Have you seen the, any other handiwork or something?
Yeah, he's done some of the work over, have the work some over there.
Well, let's, let's make a decision on this carpet. What do we?
Well. I mean, I have that real pretty.
What if I turn it around the other way?
Upside down?
Maybe it looks better on the back side.
I can't see it at all.
That's a, that's a plus.
I make a motion that we accept the carpet from Diamonds at two, at twenty dollars a yard or twenty-two dollars a yard, whether.
Two thousand for whatever it is they've got.
Yeah.
Is there a second? All second. I can't. We have a motion, a second to approve the brown carpet presented by Diamond in Clamath Falls. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
I'm opposed. I, because we didn't check locally, that's the only.
You what?
I'm opposed.
Cause we didn't check locally?
That's the only reason I'm opposed. I, I think it's probably a good deal, but I think we should do that first.
We'll check locally and then we'll come back.
Well, if you, if you can do that, I'll, I would make the second. I mean, I would, in, in that regard.
We haven't done.
Okay, this one has already failed, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, this one has failed. So let's put in forth a new motion.
Well, okay, I would make a motion that we move forward with this if in fact we cannot find the better price locally and I think that's.
Is there a second?
All seconded.
Okay, I have a motion that if no local merchant can beat the price of the brown carpet from Diamond, that we would purchase the brown carpet. Is that your motion?
I think it was close to it, right?
I don't, I mean, did I get everything?
You said it had to be a match. I think we're saying close. Yeah, competitive.
I think it'll go free.
I think it will.
Not gonna fly either.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
So that's three. Opposed?
Nay.
Two. Motion carries.
That's fine because I will tell you from now on until my last day here how ugly it is.
Okay. We will start all two meetings with a note and share the, the carpet design. Okay. There being no further business before the council from the public, I will adjourn the meeting at five oh three.